Followed by the pledge of allegiance by Mayor Pro Tem Ebene Sanko.
Dear Lord, thank you for letting us all gather here safely tonight and give safe travel home. Come into our hearts and minds and help us make the best decisions for our city and citizens. In Jesus' name we pray.
At this time we have roll call. Councilmember Evelyn Jones, here. Councilmember Greg Abar.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Ebene Sanko.
Present.
Councilmember Rosemary Bigby. Councilmember Florence Jackson. Also present is Justin Pruitt, City Attorney, Dean Lornoy, City Secretary, and Dr. Annette Goldberg, City Administrator. At this time, we will have public comments. At this time, citizens who desire to address the City Council with comments of a general nature may do so for the period limited to three minutes. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up for general public comment?
No ma'am.
So we'll move on to consent and regular agenda items. Citizens who desire to address the City Council with comments regarding matters under consent or regular agenda may do so at this time for a period limited up to three minutes. Madam Secretary, do we have someone? Do we have members?
Yes ma'am.
We first have Brent Lopez speaking regarding Quality Record Services.
How's everybody doing? I stand in front of y'all for the fifth time in 12 years in your presence in my company Quality Record Services. This is the second time in two years that I've come forward. The main thing is, is I want to understand why I'm here again today. Because it seems like every so often, every couple of years, I have to come and defend myself and my company in front of you all. Now Mayor Vida, me and you met in private and you had discussed that, you know, this was brought to you by council members and that you have to do your due diligence as mayor to bring this forward. And I understand that. But my thing is, Councilmember Sanko, I don't understand why this is personal. I don't understand why you have it out for Quality Record Services. And it's you, and it's nobody else. And I just want to bring it in front of everybody here. Ms. Jones, you've been here a long time. You've dealt with me before, even when you were mayor. We tried a rotation before, it didn't work out. M.D. Wilson was present and Ciana Tony was on rotation and they came right back. Another thing is now a new allegation has come to light. There's been a council member, Councilmember Sanko, that's been offered an amount of money to put another company on rotation. I can't prove that. That's hearsay. It's a rumor. I don't know. But I will tell you this. If we do go through this process and I'm terminated, I'll take it. It's no problem. I don't want to be where I'm not wanted. I've proven myself and lived for this city. This is all my tow bills that I've done for the police department in the last two years that equal $6,500 worth of tow that I did for free at zero money. I've proven to be an asset to this place and I don't know why I keep fighting to be here. But I will say this, and I'm going to leave this because I'm going to cut it short. If M.D. Wilson Record Service has picked us to be the next company of this city, there will be a lawsuit and not only from me, but from multiple wreckers in the county that have already come forward. And I will say this, and I'm not going to go into depth and I'm not going to be personal, I'm not going to go into detail. I don't know the reason of why, but if it is, it is a major conflict of interest. I'm not going to go into depth, y'all can figure it out on your own, but it is a conflict of interest. So I leave this with you. I want to continue to do my job for this city. I've done it and I'm going to continue to do it. I've proven myself and I don't know why. I want to know tonight why is it that I'm here in front of all of you again to defend myself, to be here? I just want to know a reason and an explanation. You've never gotten a complaint? You've never had anything from PD against me? You've never heard anything besides I tried to help the PD? And that's what I'm going to continue to do. Thank you.
Next, we have Sherri Forson regarding Quality Record Services.
Evening everyone. Blessings to you all. I'm just here as a resident of Arcola and I'm here on the same agenda, wondering the opposed, I'm opposing for the record services to be terminated. Since I've been here, I'm a business owner here as well, and I'm a resident. Since I've been here, Quality Record have done tremendous things for my business, my food truck, trailer. They have helped me when they found out that I was a, when I was a resident. I used to be parked right here and my truck was, it was stuck. And once they found it, came talking to me, trying to, you know, see what was going on. And once they found out that I was a resident, they pulled me, pulled me out for free. And to me, that's the type of people that we need for our community, you know? People that's going to help. And we're not asking for things for free, but you know, when things come about and issues come about that way, you know? We want to know that our businesses, our community, our children, you know, everybody is in good hands. And it don't just means the record service, you know? We're here for everything pertaining to Arcola. So my motto is, a lot of other people's motto is, if it's not wrong, don't fix it. So, and I want to know the reason why, if there's any fractions, any violations or anything, because we haven't heard anything. So we're here as a people wanting to know as well. Thank you.
Next, we have Mike Stein, also speaking about Quality Record Services.
Y'all know that Quality Record Service has been here for the city of Arcola since the eighties. They've done a tremendous job working with the community. And one of the things that I'm concerned about is why all of a sudden this changed? Mr. Abar? Is this personal thing? Or is it discrimination? Or does the city have complaints because Quality Paint has always supported Arcola? In the things that we did, in the things they do, in providing the service to the city, especially to the police department? They have gone out of their way to pick up our cars, bring them back here if they needed, or take them to the shop, or even taking our cars from the city to the shop where they need it. It's out of charge. When we had parties for the kids, they participated in it. Along with other innocent. But they've always leaned their hand towards the city. They've always put the city first before themselves a lot of times. Very seldom. We tried the rotation before and it's been done before, doesn't work. The citizens have asked me about it. That's why I'm here. Because I want to know what the problem is. So they know. If there's a problem? Is it something personal? Does the city? Is the city picking on them? Do y'all have somebody else? We know what we got. You know, y'all want to change? That's fine. But you don't know what you're getting into. Are you going to get the same service that you're getting now? And if not? Why ain't? Why make the change? The citizens? And I, we have the right to know, you know? Because it, to me, it looked like it might be personal or discrimination. Now, I don't understand y'all. Because y'all are here for the best interest of the community.
Mr. Stein, your time is up.
Okay, well, thank you for your time and I appreciate it.
We have Mr. Fred Burson, also speaking about Quality Record Services.
Sitting in that seat for six years. I didn't ask for quality, the quality was here when I got here. And I know that the relationship with the city goes a lot longer than when I even became, started thinking about coming to this city as an electric official. But I will say that I thought it was a distance for you guys towing cars. I know you guys got a storage lot, which is not even a mile outside of town. Lot of times, police departments, they tow cars, then they have to go back. To go one mile, other than go six, seven miles, maybe 10 miles to check the car out, see what was in, they do that, right? Okay, point three miles. That's how far the city has to send a car, one of the officers, gas time, and putting officers back in the street to protect the citizens. But the record speaks for itself. I'm not going to come up there and promote them or nothing like that because it speaks for itself. They don't need no promotion. You guys, Jones, Abar, you guys know what this is because you all are tenured council members. You all know. But I do, I did receive something they said, and I just want to ask Sanko, is it 20,000 or is it more or less for you to bring? Because you know, you came back to me for years, two years, three years, to try to get rid of this place. And my, and my answer to you then, and my answer to you tonight, is that I don't go out and tow cars. I don't run service. I don't do none of that. Neither one of you all do it. Those in badges and uniforms, that's, that's their job. And that's why I left it to the chief to say, hey, if there's someone you want to change and they not doing a good job, I'm all for it. You know? They say I got voted out because I wasn't doing a good job. Well, just same thing, y'all don't vote. You got to vote, that you have to place, to place this man in or out of business. It's a vote. Whether you're doing the job right or whether you're doing it wrong. And I still had it, had it there at the police department, saying, hey, they have done something that they shouldn't have done. Are they misplacing somebody's deal or something like that? If there's nothing there, it's nothing there. Like the old saying goes, there ain't no law that's safe. Wrong on this street, dead wrong. And I see you, Mayor, you still tapping on the show, trying to calm her down. Can't do it. Can't do it. Sorry, that's what you got. Thanks.
Now we have J.R. Hernandez regarding the extension of Rice Avenue.
Evening Mayor, evening council members, and fellow citizens. This is my first time appearing here at this city. Got, brought forward some information that was not as easily and transparently available to my mother. We've been patiently waiting for over a decade to have a lot of the streets in the community finished. We've been made a lot of promises. And I apologize for not being here last time, but I would appreciate if there's anything we can do before the, at least in consideration, I humbly request that they do the extension. And I'm not even sure how that really works. But in my business, well, actually, I just came from DC, so seeing all this stuff is, you know, it's a little disheartening. But hopefully we come together as a community here because I look forward to making this my home. But at this moment though, just to be aware, my mother has property here and I had some in the past, but I'm not sure, you know, how we're going to go forward with that. But I just humbly request, I don't know the procedures or what's necessary or what needs to be done. I'm sure, you know, I can present whatever evidence is necessary or I'm even willing to pay. I mean, we're, I'm willing to pay my first share of taxes and then some. I mean, we've done it for over a decade almost and at the local level and even state level and federal level. So anything we can do to kind of make sure that we get these streets built out so we can also, you know, increase tax revenue here in the community. And that comes by also bringing some business back and also doing good business practices. So I don't know the history of this town. Honestly, I've actually seen you guys in the newsway across the country. So, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to kind of hopefully, you know, make, make good light of this and we look forward and Arcola becomes, you know, a good name around here as many others have, you know, rosen around here. But yeah, I'm here, I'm available. I'd like to contribute many skills and any type of, I'm also an engineer in construction by design. I've developed a lot of communities in my history. Fortunately, I got taken away by the government and I've been overseas for way too long, I would say, but God bless America and God bless Texas and Arcola, you know? God bless Arcola. So thank you folks.
That concludes. Well, at this time, we will move to City Council comment. Mayor, I keep calling you Mayor, Ms. Jones. Councilmember Jones? We do have a comment.
No, I think not because you can't comment on this. As far as, then, then since the, since the first of six years, I have no favoritism with nobody. And I don't have a fight when I came about. I try to follow a lot. I can't be balled. So I thank everybody for coming and I don't care about if it's coming that means personally, personally standing, it's personal on my end, but if not, it's busy. And God bless y'all and I hope y'all have a good afternoon at this meeting.
And I won't make my comments at this time, but guess we just go to the rest of. Okay, Agenda Item Three, Public Hearing. We have public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2024-2025 budget.
Mayor and Council, we have said this before, I just would like to reaffirm that we are not changing the tax rate for this coming year. And City Secretary, do we have anybody signed up for this hearing?
No ma'am.
Okay, Agenda Item Three B. Okay. Okay, okay, so at this time, we do, we will open a public hearing on the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget and the proposed taxes. Does anyone have any comments? Want to speak on that? All right, Agenda Item Three B, and this would be the public hearing on the proposed tax rate for fiscal year 2024. Well, I did the budget first and then second was the tax rate. Oh, you, okay, you did the budget first. That's why, maybe it's bigger. Okay, wait a minute, before we move forward, is there anyone in the public who wanted to speak on the tax rate? Okay, now we can close. Public hearing is officially closed for both items. Now we're moving on to Agenda Item Four, Regular Agenda Items. Discussion, Consideration of and Possible Action to Provide Notice to Quality Record Service E. of Non-Renewal of the Non-Consent Towing Service Contract. Just deployed, City Attorney.
Okay, so can I entertain a motion from Councilmember to move this to Executive Session?
I make a motion to move number four item N. to Executive Session for the session.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Jones. Seconded by Councilmember Abar to move this item regarding the discussion of Quality Record Service to the Executive Session. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passed. Agenda Item Five, Plans, Plats, and Permits. Discussion, Consideration of and Possible Action to Approve a Resolution Regarding a Final Plat Submitted by Todd Elson of R.G. Miller Engineers for Approximately 30.085 Acres of Land to Be Commonly Identified as Glendale Lake Section 14 Located in D.I. and G&amp;N Railroad Company Survey A-352 and the A.B. Langerman Survey A-456, Fort Bean County, Texas, 101 lots, three blocks, and four reserves. Mr. Lawrence Turner, Kaluza East.
Good evening, everyone. I am here again following up. This is Section 14, so we've gone through a lot of these different sections and I'm sure I have probably another six or seven of them to go through. Tonight, what you have before you is a 30.085 acre tract of land, which is again a continuation of this master plan community of Glendale Lakes. This is Section 14, they got 101 lots, three blocks, four reserves. They, they finally got it down pat where they know how to submit the flat what's required. It's following the guidelines that set out in the master plan. Staff recommends approval of this final plat. I'll entertain any questions that you may have. They have their own water system, their own sanitary sewer system. This is in your ETJ, it's not in your city limits, but it has to come through you because it's in your ETJ because one day you may decide to annex it. So it's all designed in accordance with the standards of the city of Arcola. I'll entertain any questions that you may have of me as it relates to this matter right here.
Any questions? Can I entertain a motion on the item?
I make a motion that we approve the final plat of Glendale, Section 14.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Abar, seconded by Councilmember Jones. All in favor? All opposed? Motion is passed.
Thank you very much.
Now we move, move on to Agenda Item Six, Budget Items. A, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Inordness Approving and Adopting the City of Arcola Texas General Budget for the Year 2024-2025, Making Appropriations for the City, for the City for Such Year as Reflected in Said Budget, Establishing the Procedure for the Intra-Budget Transfers and Containing Other Provisions Relating to the Subject. Dr. Annette Goldberg, City Administrator.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The budget was distributed Friday. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to address them. I thought for this evening I would just do the highlights and I would start with the Enterprise Department, or the Enterprise Fund, I should say. Total revenue for the budget for 2025 is $3,393,447. Total water operations for the budget is $632,750. Total water operations, $777,360. Total for administration is $445,151. Total capital expenditures, we're anticipating $1,538,186. As you can see, the total expenditures is $3,393,447. And our revenues do equal our expenditures for the Enterprise Fund. Are there any questions on the Enterprise Fund? Mayor, I proceed with the General Fund. For the FY '25 proposed budget, we are anticipating total revenue, including fire marshal, food truck, municipal court, other revenues and police revenues, as well as property tax and sales tax, for a total revenue of $4,670,138. For expenditures under administration, we're anticipating $1,229,461. Total capital expenditures is $162,596. For the total contract services, $549,775. Total fire marshal expenditures, $7,350. Total insurance is $75,070. Total food truck expenses is $2,350. Total municipal court expenses, $988,735. Total police expenditures for the city of Arcola is $1,435,610. And total, a total for repairs and maintenance department is $149,194. Total expenditures is $4,670,138. As you can see, our expenditures do equal our revenues, so we do have a balanced budget. I will also tell you that we have not increased in FTEs, the FTEs for the management. And I conclude my presentation. Can I get a, you can motion?
I make a motion that we approve for fiscal year 2024 budget for that.
Hey Mayor, I will need a roll call vote for this. Okay. Can I get a roll call vote, please, on this? Let me do this, I'm sorry. Motion has been, in B five, Councilmember Abar, seconded by Councilmember Bigby. And we're going for all in favor. Councilmember Jones, Councilmember Abar. Mayor Pro Tem Sanko. Councilmember Bigby. All opposed? Motion is passed. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Moving to Agenda Item Six B, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding a Vote to Ratify the City of Arcola Texas General Budget for Fiscal Year 2024-2025 to Find That the Budget's Proposed Tax Rate Will Raise More Total Property Taxes Than Last Year's Budget. Dr. Annette Goldberg, City Administrator. Can I entertain a motion? On ratifying this item, please?
Make a motion that the city is comfortable with the budget range to support the budget tax rate.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Abar, seconded by Councilmember Jones. I need a roll call vote for this. Councilmember Jones? Councilmember Abar? Mayor Pro Tem Sanko? Councilmember Bigby? I had, the motion has passed. At this time, the City Council will now go into Executive Session as authorized under Section 55.071 and 55.1.074 of the Texas Government Code for consultation with attorney and personnel matters. At this time, thank you.
All in favor.